City Council, please rise for their prayer. Pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, as a body we congregate in this council chamber, we pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which is in its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brayden, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bonzel?
Here.
Mr. Gabbert?
Here.
Mr. Dracy?
Here.
Mr. Kelch?
Here.
Mr. DiNardo?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Brayden is here.
All members present, thank you, Mr. Brayden. Moving on to amendment of agenda. Under item F, minutes of previous meeting, we have the amendments for November 10th, 2020, and November 24th, 2020. Also, item L1 and L2, there have been updates this afternoon on both of the appropriations ordinances. And that's all I have. May I have a motion to amend the agenda? Mr. DiNardo?
Yes, please.
Motion by Mr. DiNardo. Mr. Dracy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dracy. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden's a yes.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item F, amendments of previous meeting, November 10th, 2020, and November 24th, 2020. Do I have a motion? Mr. Thompson?
Will we accept both previous minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. May I have a second? Mr. DiNardo? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden's a yes.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item H, request to address council. This evening, we have Chief Bill Kramer. We will have a presentation on the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Lead Program. Chief Kramer.
Good evening. So, opportunity was presented to us to participate in the Lead Program, Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion. So, we've had several meetings, myself, the Safety Director, Assistant Law Director Tim Gary's been involved, I think, two, is that right?
Yes.
Couple of them. And it's really just another tool that we can give to police officers to... It's basically, they can give a more thorough explanation than I can, but it's a... The ability, if we have somebody that we run into quite often, that we know is struggling in some areas, or it could be in several areas, you know, whether it be drug, or alcohol, homelessness, whatever the case might be, and we come across them, either it could be in, when they were committing a crime, let's say a shoplifting from Krogers, we get the call, we're like, you know, this is maybe the third or fourth time we've arrested them, it could be the first time, it just depends, but we can refer them to the Leads Program. And what we do in that case is we hold off on signing the charges, and they will work within to see if they can get this person the help that they need. And within a, like a 30-day period, if they seem to be making the necessary steps to do the steps that they need to improve themselves, then we will not file the charges. But if it shows that they're not doing what's necessary, then we'll go ahead and file the charges. Ideal being that we get the person the help they need, and hopefully they won't reoffend again. So, I'll let you go ahead and take the paper.
Perfect. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Megan Gosney. I am with the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition. I'm the program administrator, and I'm also the program administrator on the Lead Project. So, as you all mentioned in the name, it stands for Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion. And the county was awarded a $500,000 grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance to pilot a Lead Program in the county. Currently, we are operating in the Cincinnati Police Department in the downtown area in District One and the Central Business Section. And so, our grant was set from 2018 to the end, till September of 2020, but we got a one-year, no-cost extension through September of next year, so we're looking at piloting in other jurisdictions. So, that's why we've looked at Norwood, and that's why we're coming to you tonight. So, the Lead Model originated from Seattle back in 2011. Since then, they formed the Lead National Support Bureau, which helps provide guidance and consultation to other jurisdictions, like Hamilton County, who would like to pilot this in their area. So, when we're looking at those kind of Lead offenses, we are, like the chief said, looking at individuals who are committing a lot of low-level misdemeanor offenses because of substance use, homelessness, mental health, or poverty. So, we have five different offenses that we're looking at. So, misdemeanor theft, drug paraphernalia, trespassing, disorderly conduct, and criminal damaging. So, that's really what we're hoping for in terms of the eligible offenses. And we have two different ways that individuals can be referred to us, as Chief Kramer said. So, I'm going to turn it over to Kelsey, our screening outreach coordinator, to give you a little bit more detail about how that process works.
Good evening. Like Megan said, I'm Kelsey Richardson. I'm the screening and outreach coordinator for the program. I'm pretty much the liaison between law enforcement and the members of the team. So, I will be the one that the officers work with more in-depth. So, the two ways to get into the program are either the arrest diversion or social contact referral. Arrest diversions are the ones that are being committed, or, sorry, let me back up, are, is a response to an individual who has committed those offenses. So, they occur on-scene. So, if an individual is stealing from Kroger, the officer can do the preliminary paperwork to make sure that the person is eligible. They call me, I respond on-scene, and I'll take over then. The person has to consent to the program, and the individual who the crime is being committed against has to be approved to the program. So, Kroger, whether that's the security guard, or the manager, or whoever, has to consent to the individual being diverted instead of charged with that offense. Like Chief Kramer mentioned, they have 30 days to engage and complete a psycho-social assessment with our case manager, and if they do so, then the charges are kind of wiped away. If they do not, then the charges are filed as normal, and the officer would proceed with whatever steps they need to do. And then, the second way is a social contact referral. That pretty much means that the person hasn't really came in contact with law enforcement, or hasn't committed an offense, but they still think that person would benefit from help in some fashion. So, maybe it's that repeated offender that maybe hasn't committed an offense in a while, and the officer's like, "Yeah, I know that person's down and out on their luck, they need some help." They can refer them to the program without any charges being held. The similar steps kind of take place, officer submits a paper to myself, we review it in our Operation Work Group meetings. Megan will go over those a little bit in detail in just a minute, but then I follow up with that individual and the officer at that time to complete the paperwork and get them into the program.
Cool. Thanks.
And then, just kind of like one piece structurally of how the program kind of continues to engage with officers throughout, is we have two different types of meetings, our Operations Work Group meeting and our Policy Control Group meeting. So, our Operations Work Group, I'll kind of refer to that as our OWG. That's a meeting that we have weekly with the people that are really boots on the ground. So, a handful of officers, the Lead Case Management Team, some local service providers as well, meet to review what Kelsey mentioned, the social contact referrals that are coming. So, with the social contact referrals, we're not necessarily waiting for these individuals to go and commit offenses. However, we know that they could use assistance because the officers are seeing them a lot. When it comes to the social contact referrals, we do not have any exclusionary criteria for those individuals to enter into the program. They really just need that referral from law enforcement. So, that's an opportunity at the Operations Work Group to gauge, look at their history, make sure that they're, you know, not a harm to themselves or to the case managers, since there is no exclusionary criteria. When we're talking about the arrest diversions, that's an opportunity for us to keep the officers updated on their status, to let them know, like, "Hey, they've completed everything, so you're good, you don't have to worry about filing that charge." Or we can say, "Hey, it's been 40 days, we haven't been able to engage with them, you can go ahead and file." So, that's just a way for everybody to kind of keep up to date on the progress of the participants. And then, the Policy Control Group is really looking at the people that have really been involved in the conversations thus far. So, you know, having Norwood's legal team, having the Safety Services Director, having the police and the county team, really look at the eligibility and ineligible criteria, making sure that the program continues to run smoothly, and, you know, making sure that there aren't any policies or procedures in place that are creating any barriers for officers or staff in the program. So, just the final piece that I wanted to talk about is data. As we've started to talk about what it would look like to pilot in Norwood, we asked Chief Kramer and some of his officers to pull together the five eligible offenses that I mentioned early on, and how that would look. In 2019, you guys had around, so if we're looking at just those five, potentially 624 eligible offenses happening here in Norwood. So, you know, if we can help half of them, even 25%, we're hoping that that's going to take a big load off of the Norwood Police Department to really help getting them into services. So, we're hoping to kind of see that trend continue, whether it's through arrest diversions or social contacts. But Kelsey and I are happy to kind of answer any logistics questions that you guys have. As you mentioned, we're still working out some policy documents between the Law Director's office and our county team, and making sure that everyone's on board. We've talked to some of the police officers and the command staff last week about the program, but we're really hoping to kind of hit the ground running in the new year. So, happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Mr. Dracy?
The only question I have is, how much of a load is this going to put on the officers, or if any at all? I mean, is it going to take any extra time away from them? Is it going to?
So, ideally, it's one piece of paper they have to fill out. I know one of our officers, we haven't gone live with the program last night, but, or haven't gotten live with the program yet, but Sergeant Borchers last night found somebody that he thought, not during, it was like a social contact, not during an arrest, and he simply emailed the representative and has that person working with him now. So, the idea is that, it's completely discretionary. So, if an officer, at any point, doesn't think this person would be a good fit for the program, they don't have to do it. If they think it is a good fit, and they want to take the time to fill out that form and send it to them, then, you know, they can take the time to do that. The idea being, that the hope would be that that time to fill out the form, maybe we won't have to deal with this person again. Very well may, but, yeah, so, that answer.
It did.
It's just a one. It's a one case.
I was just kind of wondering if the officer was having to do something on a daily basis, or monthly basis, or weekly, but it doesn't sound that way.
And we've asked that kind of like two to three officers are present during the Operations, that are present during that Operations Work Group meeting, just so that even if that specific officer that referred isn't able to, we can pass along and say, you know, "Hey, Officer so-and-so gave this arrest diversion, let him know he's good to not file that." Just to be able to kind of pass the message along, that way, not every single officer has to be present.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, you'd mentioned, early on, some of the underlying causes, I only got three of them, but substance abuse, homelessness, poverty.
Mental health.
Mental health. I love what this program does. I'm curious, though, a 30-day program will not deal with those underlying causes, so what kind of things do you do to help address those causes? Because that's also part of breaking the cycle of repeated offense.
So, it's only 30 days that they, we're giving them 30 days to complete their initial intake. So, for clients themselves, we could be with that client for a year or two years. We really consider this long-term intensive case management. So, depending on what they identify as their immediate need, whether it's housing, whether it's going into treatment, like, just recently, someone for our CPD referrals, we were able to get them connected into a treatment program. So, when they come out of that, we'll be there to help them transition to whatever that next step might be. So, that 30-day period is really just to help get them engaged, start to get some of the paperwork, and really get a better sense of what their treatment plan might look like.
Really just to entry into the program.
Right. So, that 30-day is, you know, we're giving them that opportunity to complete all the necessary paperwork, and it's really only a handful of documents. It doesn't really take too long, you could do it in an hour or two to do it, but most of the time, it's pretty intense for that individual to sit through.
Yeah. Just a quick follow-up. What kind of success rates are you seeing?
Say that again.
What kind of success rates are you seeing with helping people stay on?
Yeah. So, that's a tricky question, because success is going to look different, depending on what that individual's needs are, and depending on what the referrals look like from the officers. So, we really say success for the program is going to look like a reduction in calls for the officers, a reduce in overall recidivism, and, you know, successful engagement with those clients. So, that's going to be different for every jurisdiction and every program, but that's, I would say, those are our overall success measures.
That's great. Thank you so much. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you said, I think you said initially that the officer has to, like, you all actually respond to the scene, is that?
Yeah.
So, you know, normally, the officer probably processes, and then, you know, I don't know, either takes the person to Hamilton County Jail, or gives them kind of a ticket or site of summons or something, I'm not sure. How long does it take you all, though, to arrive to the scene once you get the call? I mean, I know that there's always going to be things that come up, but what's like your all's average?
Yeah. So, and part of that will be, once we've piloted, like, once we start the program, we'll have what we call green light and red light days. So, if we know that they're, and part of that, so, for instance, right now, in CPD, our two green light days are Tuesdays and Thursdays. Those are the days that we're accepting arrest diversions. So, Kelsey and Callie are their case manager, they're positioned downtown, ready to go. So, in that instance, once the program launches here in Norwood, we'll identify what those green light days are. We've talked to Chief Kramer about having, you know, a space here in Norwood to make sure that that response time's going to be, you know, 10 minutes, depending on where in Norwood it's happening, so that Kelsey can either respond to the scene, or maybe it's even responding to the police station, depending on what they see, what they deem fit. Keeping in mind, officers can submit a social contact referral at any time, so really looking at what's going to work best for that situation at that time. So, it really kind of depends on where it happens, and where the case managers will end up being located.
Yeah, and then, on the red light days, so you're saying that's when the form gets filled out, and it kind of, the officer still doesn't submit charges at that point?
Correct. We would just have them, in that situation, we would just have them email that referral form to Kelsey. So, we would kind of leave it up to the discretion of the officer that day, if they felt like they needed to arrest them, like, they needed to get them off the streets, then it would be up to their discretion. Or if they feel like they can wait a day or two for Kelsey to be able to do that initial screening, then we kind of leave it up to officers.
Kind of makes sense. Thank you.
Mr. DiNardo?
You kind of asked, I was going to ask about success, but I also realize I don't mean to put you on the spot, because it sounds like you've been operating for about a year in the Cincinnati.
We actually just, so, we were set to launch the day that the city and county went into a state of emergency because of COVID. So, we were actually set to launch mid-March. So, we, you know, there were a lot of different things that we had to put in place from a city's perspective of, we really developed the MOU and the policy documents to kind of use as a template for other jurisdictions, for future expansion, things of that nature. So, there was a lot that went into the kind of building of this program, hiring staff, that sort of thing. So, we actually did not launch in Cincinnati until mid-July.
Okay.
So, it's only been a few months in CPD, but...
Well, I guess it'd be, it'd be cool, maybe, for you guys, or you too, Kramer, if we could put a reminder almost on the calendar to talk in like six months a year?
Yeah.
Because I think there's a lot of legs beyond just this immediate program, but any programs that are like that. And so, if we start seeing tangible benefits that, you know, we can all kind of relate to, we can start to kind of force multiply this sort of thing. So, maybe, I'll do it on my phone, but maybe like in six months or nine months, is that a reasonable timeframe to say?
Yeah.
Check in, like, "Hey, we are, we reduced, I think, some of these offenders, we got 10 people that we didn't see on the streets again."
Yeah.
That's, that's a big deal for us, and I think it'd be cool to get some kind of celebratory metrics going, if they, if they start to bear fruit.
Absolutely. Yeah, and we're partnering with the University of Cincinnati, they're our data and research partner for the program. So, keeping that in mind as well, so if there's anything, you know, that this council would like to see in terms of data, that you would be curious about specifically for Norwood, definitely let us know, and we'll be sure that our data team can capture that for you guys, if there's something in particular that you're looking for, we can do that as well.
Thanks. I'll just reach out through you.
Perfect.
Chief, thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Sonny James.
Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue in beautiful Norwood, Ohio. First, let me say thank you to Megan and Kelsey. This is a wonderful opportunity, I'm glad I came, because back in 1997, my office was right there at 1250 Tennessee Avenue, which is right by White Castles all the way down to Allison. And so, we ship food out every month to families all over the country. And our organization actually was one of the lead organizations to work with the diversion program. And so, I would encourage the chief, and the mayor, and administration to really reach out and to make that program work better, to have community liaisons who have a history with helping with diversion issues. And I just want to say, welcome to Norwood, and welcome to our, to our youth and to the families that we serve here. But I certainly encourage that we have some community liaisons who have success record, and our record is on record that we have exactly 99% success rate since 1997, working with rehabilitating youth and adults in the system. So, we certainly will offer our things. In fact, I believe Mr. Dracy and Mr. Kelch and I had began dialoguing about the potential of bringing diversion options to Norwood, so it's just right on, right on point. So, that's great. Bravo, bravo. All right. Now, I'm here today, I'm glad I came because of that, because we really need that. Because if we don't identify the need, but again, I want to say to Norwood and to you elected officials, you know, this would be an opportunity that if you go back and look at my 13-point plan for the city, then you would see how, you know, efforts are already in place, but sometimes, when we try to address them, we try to circumvent, or we don't want to include certain people, because certain people may challenge what you represent or what you think. And I understand that, but when it comes to the lives of people we serve, I'm going to encourage you to put your personal agendas down, and really do what's in the best interest of these young people. And don't select someone, Mr. Mayor, that may just be nicer than I am. Select somebody who has the experience that I have, or someone equivalent, and also make sure that we're looking at racial disparities and racial equalities as well. That's going to be very important if you expect to get any success with that. Now, with that being said, guys, I'm going to say this, and prayerfully, we have hundreds of folks listening to us right now. You know, recently, we're talking about our dispatchers. Guys, I'm going to say something real quick. It doesn't matter if people agree with you or not. It doesn't matter if that's the best thing for Norwood since sliced bread. Here's what's not best for Norwood. What's not best for Norwood is for us to continue to participate in status quo protocols. I was very disappointed on yesterday, when I heard that the mayor had been working on this, or at least looking into this, for months. Yet, I don't, I don't remember ever being talked to, I don't remember even being asked as a resident, as an invested resident, not just in myself and my family, but in my community, and in the lives of people we all serve. It's like we just do things. We don't ask for the community input. Guys, I'm not saying that if it's the best thing for Norwood, great, but the audacity for an elected official, our mayor, and some of you who are so afraid to stand up, we have great people on this council, we have great elected officials, you all are nice human beings, but it's like we operate like we're boneheads sometimes. And yes, I said it, boneheads. If you have something that's going to affect the perception of some other human being, if you don't have enough common sense to just say, "Hey, we're going to make the decision anyway, but let's tell people in advance." You keep people pushed out, which makes people see systemic protocols. And you went around saying, "Well, what's proto, what's systemic? What does that mean?" Well, the Bible says, "You have not because you ask not." And you don't ask what it means, because you really don't care. And this is just evidence that you do what you want to do, how you want to do it, when you want to do it, you talk to who you want to talk to, and you don't talk to who you don't want to talk to. Systemic racism takes on many looks. Just because you have one or two black people you talk to, does not mean you don't act like a racist, and it don't mean that you're not one. So, if we want to get away from our old reputations, guys, sit down and talk to people. Just let people know what you're thinking. It's okay if we don't agree, but we can still come together as peers, and we can still celebrate together. God bless you all, I'm here to serve this community just like you. Please act like you.
Thank you, Pastor James. That's all the requests we have to address council this evening. Item A, reports of standing committees of council, we don't have any, or council this evening. Item J, third reading of ordinance and resolutions, we don't have any this evening. That brings us to item K, second reading of ordinance and resolutions. K1, ordinance authorizing the Norwood Safety Service Director to enter an agreement with Advertising Vehicles Incorporated Doing Business as Ad Sposure for the Supply of Certain Digital and Static Signage.
Make a motion that we have the second reading of this, please.
Motion by Mr. DiNardo to have the second reading. May I have a second? Mr. Gabbert?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Gabbert. Any discussion? Please call the roll, Mr. Brayden.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden's a yes.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Mr. Brayden, may we have the second reading?
Yes, sir. Ordinance authorizing the Norwood Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with Advertising Vehicles Inc., Doing Business as Ad Sposure for the Supply of Certain Digital and Static Signage.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Moving on to item L, introductory reading of ordinance and resolutions. L1, ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. Mr. DiNardo?
Make a motion that we have all three readings.
Motion by Mr. DiNardo to have all three readings. Mr. Bonzel?
I'd like to second that.
Second by Mr. Bonzel. Any discussion? Mr. DiNardo?
I'd like to, please. I wrote this out, but it's easier if I just kind of talk about both item L1 and 2 kind of at the same time. So, I'll just read what I wrote. These appropriation changes for 2020 reflect requirements from the Audit of State, particularly the removal of the Audit's Office and increased appropriations in public lands and buildings. For 2021, numerous changes, both plus and minus, are required, again, by the Audit's of the State to match the tax budget. We passed that back, and I believe, July of 2020. We all know revenues have significantly changed since then, and we, being the Norwood Audit Office, will adjust these amounts in preparation of the new Certificate of Estimated Resources in January of 2021. Norwood's Audit Department also decreased appropriations across the board by 5% to allow for open POs at year's end. That might be what you saw when you saw the two versions, that was like 142 to 137, or something like that. While this wasn't how it was done in the past, this, again, and this should be stated three times here, this was a requirement of the state auditors. The state... Audit Office. Uh, it's important to note that these, being both the 2020 and the 2021 appropriation changes, have been approved, and again, are required by, uh, the Audit of the State. So just kind of wanted to explain what we're seeing. Um, I didn't get a chance to talk to Jim, uh, directly, but that was the communications that we had, uh, via email.
Thank you, Mr. DeNardo. Any further discussion? Please call the roll, Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DeNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden's a yes.
All members present, voting aye, the motion passes. Mr. Brayden, may we have all three readings, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. May I have a motion?
Yes, I would like to vote on this, pass.
Motion by Mr. DeNardo. Mr. Bonzel.
I'd like to second that.
Second by Mr. Bonzel. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DeNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden is a yes.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item L2, ordinance making permanent appropriations for the expenditures of the City of Norwood, Ohio for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to move that we have the first two readings of this ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel to have the first and second reading. May I have a second?
Wish I could understand why.
Can I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, so I mean, if the intention, there could be an intention to do all three. I just thought to do the first two, since we do still plan on having, um, another meeting on December, I think, 21st. Uh, and so that gives us time, if there is any, uh, errors or issues or any other objections to it, um, it gives time to adjust it, but open to other feedback on that.
Mr. DeNardo.
Yeah, I thought we weren't going to do the December 21st. We are.
I mean, yeah. I would just say that we have not talked about it otherwise, um, not doing that meeting still.
I, I think it's premature to say that we're, we're not. I don't know what.
That's fair to the point.
Okay. You know, what would, would happen.
Yep.
And that's the last meeting of the year.
You're right.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes, I'd, I'd like to see all three readings on this, just in case we don't have the December 21st meeting.
I had a, I had a question, uh, to you, Mr. Bonzel.
Mr. DeNardo.
Um, uh, other than, uh, time and a, a sense of not needing to get it done until, uh, the Certificate of Estimated Resources in January, um, was there, were there things you were particularly curious about or wanted to look further, or was it just, there's no rush?
Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, no, just to the previous council person. I, I have no objections to doing all three readings.
Okay.
Uh, so if we kind of think, feel like that might be a better way to go, I'm definitely happy to amend my motion.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
I'll remove my second, thank you.
Mr. Thompson will remove his second. Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, I'll just amend my motion to do all three readings.
We have a motion by Mr. Bonzel to have all three readings. Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson will second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DeNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden's a yes.
All members present, voting aye, the motion passes. Mr. Brayden, may we have all three readings, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance making permanent appropriations for the expenditures of the City of Norwood, Ohio for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance making permanent appropriations for the expenditures of the City of Norwood, Ohio for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance making permanent appropriations for the expenditures of the City of Norwood, Ohio for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. May I have a motion? Mr. Bonzel.
Uh, yeah, I moved that the ordinance passed.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel. Mr. DeNardo.
Second, please.
Second by Mr. DeNardo. Any further discussion? Please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, I think Mr. DeNardo mentioned it, but I mean, for the, for the vast majority of the items that we're appropriating on this one, it's essentially matching our fiscal recovery plan. And so, uh, we're going to plan on, it sounds to me, from what I heard from the Audit, that we're going to be adjusting that in the first quarter of next year, uh, amending that. And so, you know, that would be the time for, uh, you know, if we want to make systemic changes to things in here, if we want to, there's things we want to move around, things we want to add funding to, or whatever, if there's citizens that we see changes, you know, that would be the time to do it, because our appropriation plan has to match, uh, what our fiscal recovery plan is right now. So, uh, just keep that in mind, if, you know, there are people out there that want to see changes to our budget, that, uh, there's definitely the, the time to do that, and that'll be in the first quarter next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else?
Thanks.
Please call the roll.
Sir. Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DeNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden is a yes.
All members present, voting yes. Motion passes. Moving on to item L3, resolution expressing council's objection to major changes in the status of the Norwood Communication Center Dispatch Services, 911 Services, and status as a public safety answering point, PSAP, without express council approval. Mr. Dracy.
I'd like to request all three readings on this, uh, one in its entirety, please.
Motion by Mr. Dracy to have all three readings. The first in its entirety, second caption only. May I have a second? Mr. Kelch?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Kelch.
All right.
Mr. Dracy.
Thanks for on to the discussion portion of this. Couple key factors that I've thought about over the last day or so, since the meeting. Um, again, I'm going to, I'm going to reiterate that Hamlin County would absorb 10 to 15% increase in call volume. We do need to hire clerks 24/7, and here's why. Once the off, once the officers working from eight to eight PM to 8 AM begin entering their own information, even if it's a warrant, missing person, stolen car, they will be asking for additional money. Most likely, it will be in the next negotiation, um, possibly to provide a shift if during these working hours. This will take a bite out of the budget itself and the cost savings. Moving to Hamlin County, communications and staffing of clerk 24/7, with two full-time clerk positions and 19 part-time positions creates a $522,000 budget for this. Adding secretaries to the chiefs would add an extra $45,000 to that budget. Adding two full-time E311 personnel would add another, an additional $45,000 to the budget. Just as these three items, or just as of these three items, that I, that I have guessed, because I don't have any idea of how much the mayor is looking at paying these people, this total budget would come to $612,000. Let's subtract the alleged $750,000 savings. We're now looking at a total of $138,000 saving off that alleged $750,000. Again, I'm estimating because I don't have any, I, at the time, I didn't have any numbers, any, any real figures to go off of. This was just a, let's throw the dart at the wall type situation. $750,000 figure came from the mayor's projections of savings, not mine. This is assuming that we approve a $1.2 million budget for dispatch in 2021. Now, if we look at approving a $1 million budget for dispatch rather than a $1.2 million, our cost savings would be at zero. We wouldn't, you know, we would be under that projection. Does anyone think that someone being asked to do the tasks the mayor has laid out for less than $15 an hour is reasonable? Absolutely not. And that's because people now assume that $15 an hour is the standard. This is what I based my projections off and figured in an estimate for the benefits. I don't know what our benefits cost. I just guessed that what our benefits could cost somewhere around $15,000, possibly more. If the mayor or the auditor do not agree, then they can show me the projections that they have laid out. Stop dancing around and putting the cart before the horse. How many have really sat down to think about the actual savings? Chastise me if you'd like, but I am within a, within a matter of days sitting down to project to the best of my ability. You might ask why I'm not being objective. Well, that's because I have not seen or heard a lot of reasons to give up our services, so I am attempting to show the side in favor of keeping. I have attempted to run processing times for Norwood Dispatch, which I have finished four months worth over the last two days. But when I attempt to find out if my calculations are correct, I am unable to make contact with anyone that can verify my information due to their inability to speak with any of us. Therefore, I requested their department to come back and speak to us at a committee of the whole meeting without retaliation and provide more accurate stats. The numbers I have run show processing times for Norwood at 94% of 911 calls that are answered within 10 seconds, and 97% of 911 calls answered within 20 seconds. The old requirements for PSAP was a percentage answered within 10 seconds. Over the past few years, this requirement has been increased to 20 seconds. A dispatch center should be able to meet 94% or better within 20 seconds. Hamlin County shows a 90% um, processing time at 10 seconds and a 95% processing time at 20 seconds. As you can see, our, our communications based on those numbers are slightly better. This shows that Norwood Dispatch does match up with HCC as far as processing time. Many have asked for comparison numbers, but it is hard to gain comparison numbers when our own department is held back from providing the information. These numbers on top are all clerical work, or include all clerical work our dispatchers provide, proves what an asset we have in the city. I can be considered speaking emotionally or out of bias, but if we are all looking at the numbers, then let us talk about the numbers. Every piece of equipment will need the, will need upgrades regardless of the brand. We purchased newer equipment through the previous council. We have a lease on the equipment that we will still need to pay $120,000 on. If you know anything about a lease, you might, you might get out of it, but you'll still be paying additional fees for that. Yes, I hear the argument of, well, that's a one-time fee. Great, but this one-time fee causes scars for a lifetime. All I'm asking is that council members that do not have experience listen to myself or even Mr. Gabbard, who could provide a little insight as well. Let's take HCC minimum staffing, which is what was said is current and typical. The average staffing is 10 employees on duty at one time. So let's break that down to call volume. As Mr. Knapp stated, five staff are call takers. I will utilize the 295,957 dispatched runs. I will be generous with the ca, with the calculation. So the average 10 employees come out to a total of 53 employees. So, um, I went up on their numbers. I think it was 10, 11, 13, 8, and 9. Add it them up, it came to 53. You divide by, um, what was that, 6, 7, something like that, and came out to 10. So when you divide 53 by 295,957, you're looking at 5,580 calls per person per year. Each person's taking over 5,500 calls per year at that dispatch center. I asked why we have not looked at outsourcing the water department, just as we, we are with the tax department. The water department has had so many problems for so many years and has caused, is causing additional work for other departments, being a middleman for water and sewage. Cut the middleman out. Allow the employees of the water department to pick up the 311 Information Center. Turn that office into a welcome center for Norwood. As I looked at these appropriations, I'm looking at about $5,000 between the tax department, or 5,000, $5 million between the tax department and the water department. $5 million. I didn't even have that in here because I didn't see the appropriations. Before moving forward with any contract or any decision, I would like to see the cost savings of outsourcing, oh, I've already read that. Let's see. I would like to know what contingency Ms., uh, Chief McCabe has when our medic is called to St. Bernard, Gulf Manor, Pleasant Ridge, Bond Hill, Roselon, Avondale, Evanston, or even Columbia Township. What will happen if two squads roll on mutual aid, leaving our residents waiting for another mutual aid unit to arrive? This isn't, this is absolutely a possibility if this switch occurs, as Norwood has now been placed into a true automatic mutual aid scenario. Right now, Norwood PD and FD are not an automatic dispatch for mutual aid, but they need to be requested by the department, by a department to respond. If anybody has any questions about that, I can explain that a little bit better. This is where the response time question is being asked. Not that HCC will be slow in processing their calls, but where the mutual aid comes from, when our squads are out or when our fire engines are out. This has been clearly expressed in prior meetings. I believe because I myself really have not been thinking clearly, I haven't been able to pro, process it physically, I guess. When a recall is sent out for additional fire personnel, what rank is called in first? The highest paid down to the lowest paid? We need, we need to be leaders, leaders that stand behind their constituents. I am not a councilman for the money, for the fame, because neither of those are anywhere close to an achievement. I do it for my city. I do it for my people. I do it for my name and my pride. I stand up for my beliefs and what I feel is in the best interest of our people, our
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Any, Mr. DeNardo.
Yeah, if you could, um, uh, I had a couple thoughts I was just, uh, writing down. The dollar savings between $42 and $5, as I mentioned yesterday, was so, is so great. The delta is so large, um, that some of the people costs that you mentioned, uh, is valid, um, but in my mind, doesn't materially change any decisioning, um, because the number is so big, so.
Okay, have you, have you ran those numbers to verify that those are correct?
That $750,000.
I'm just saying, have you ran the numbers saying that it's $42?
No, I have not ran the, that is $42. I'm going by, the $42 comes by the budget.
You're.
Mr. Dracy. Let Mr. DeNardo finish.
Mr. Dracy, let Mr. DeNardo finish.
I'll answer though. It comes from the budget amount divided by runs, and that's where they just got this ballpark number, but I think it holds water. The second is that we also know that equipment and resourcing will continue to increase. We heard that from Chief McCabe and Chief Kramer, and I think that that's accurate too. I don't know how much, but I do think there's more than a 50% chance that $1.2 million will increase. I'm saying those two things mostly because I would like to focus the conversation on the fact that it's better to discuss the statistics, history, and what we really think is going to matter around the safety and security or the service offering to Norwood. That seems like a much more valid and appropriate conversation to have because if we just, in my opinion, just focus on money, it's so clear to me how big a savings that is and how important that would be. It's just hard to go down any other road, so I wanted to make that comment first. The second, which I think was brought up by a couple of people last night, which it was something I hadn't really thought about very much, and I think we should, which is why not other departments? Why not the water, as you said? And I suppose the answer is we probably should. $750,000 of savings is a big number, and we may not get as much squeezed out of Rita helping supporting the tax department, or we may not get nothing out of that one, by the way. It might just be an ad. We may not get $750,000 out of reassessing or evaluating the water department, but we should probably look at that to see if some money can be pooled or saved or optimized in some way. The only thing that's got to be considered, that I got to keep in my head though, is on one hand, we should be evaluating whether dispatch should move to the county because there's $800,000, $750,000 of annual savings up for grabs. We probably should be evaluating the water department to see if there are any savings up for grabs. And we should go down this list, and I think we have a responsibility, and it's a good point, to look at all the departments and service offerings to see if we can either optimize or save money. The only downside of that, because the upside is pretty significant, would be Norwood residents who are operating in those positions already, that we'd be either changing or removing or permanently displacing jobs for. I don't have a good comeback for that. I really only just started thinking about it because of your comments yesterday. So that's something that's, I think, weighing on me and us. But the whole spiel here is that just talking about money, I think it might not be, in my opinion, the best move because that just seems so obvious and significant in terms of how much benefit we can get from the city. My last point is, I didn't know about this resolution until yesterday, but these items have very little to do, I don't know if you drafted it, but maybe you did. These items here don't really have anything, much to do with the comments that you were making. This seems to be about the how. How it was somewhat decided before express council approval, and I think we can talk about that, but that has really nothing to do with the fact that you and I were talking about either money or, you know, service offering. I didn't know if that's what we were supposed to be talking about here, is the resolution to denounce or object to the changes without express counsel. And I thought it was the without express counsel that was the sticking point.
Thank you, Mr. DeNardo. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to just hear Mr. Dracy, if you could just repeat one thing. He said something about there was a $5 million savings. Could you just quickly say what that $5 million savings was from?
Looking at both the tax and the water department.
Okay, perfect.
Under the 2021 appropriations that we just passed.
Okay. So that $5 million savings, I mean, there's no way that that's anywhere close to accurate. Just for the first 11 months of the year, our water fund took in net revenue $4.25 million. So there's no, and as Mr. DeNardo alluded to, if we were to look at Rita for the tax department, it's going to be a wash or probably plus or minus $50,000 at the most either way. It's going to be a very close thing if that were to happen. So there's no savings here. And the water, even if there were some savings, and there could be savings in the water department going there, it doesn't actually affect the general fund bottom line because the water department is all funded through user fees, so through water fees. So while it would be good to look at, like if there are a way that we can save residents' money on water, and I think that conversation, we had brought that up at the beginning of the year, and Mr. Schneider, Mayor Schneider, brought the ordinance up to have the study for the water department done, and I don't think that we could really look at that until that study's done. But in his administration report on new business, we can ask him how the progress on that. But back to the dispatch, it was also just said, what happens when our medic units are on mutual aid? Well, the great thing is, and the thing that our residents should feel really comfortable about, and our council members too, is that the other three pieces of equipment, so the ladder truck and the other two fire apparatus, they're all equipped with the paramedic equipment, the same paramedic equipment that's equipped on the ambulances, except for the cot or whatever they use to transport the patient. But they all have that, and thankfully, almost all of our, I think almost all of our firefighters are trained paramedics. So you are going to get a response even if, for some reason, our medic units are tied up, just like they are today, both medic units are tied up, taking somebody to the hospital or, and then another one to somewhere else. So we've got just excellent medical service here in the city, and I think no matter what we do, our residents should feel assured about that. The last thing I would just say is, again, just back to the resolution. I mean, you know, when Mayor Williams was here, you know, I was harping on this, and I'll just harp on it now, you know, I do believe that council should have a say on this. I know things could happen other ways, but it wouldn't be fair to not criticize going with this without council approval, considering I criticized so much from the previous administration. So I'll just say that I'll be supporting the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Mr. Dracy.
We can discuss the water and tax department stuff later, and I'll show you where I came with those numbers. But as far as the response, I understand that all of our equipment is equipped for paramedics, and I understand firefighters are paramedics, paramedics are firefighters. I get that. However, there are times, a lot of times, that it's, that medics have to do what's called a hot load, okay? A scoop and go. That means you need to get them into a squad into the hospital because there is not a whole lot that they can do sitting there on scene. They can do that stuff on the way to the hospital, and they need to get that person there immediately. So if we've got a ladder truck sitting on scene of a heart attack that needs to be a scoop and go, and we're waiting on, let's say, a squad from Station 9 or a squad from Station 32, which is over on Forest Avenue, I can't say St. Bernard or Gulf Manor because if our squads are in Gulf Manor or St. Bernard, obviously, they're not available. We could be waiting on a squad from Deer Park, Silverton. You know, yes, we are centralized, and yes, that does have its advantages. However, when it comes to medical circumstances, when it comes to the aspects of emergency services, it's a long time to sit there and wait for an engine or another squad. If you have not rode with a police officer, if you have not rode with the fire department for at least a month straight, you won't understand it in one night. You won't understand it in one day. You have to understand how these dispatches go out, how these dispatches really go out. Because once you enter into this Hamilton County Communications Center, you're entering into an automatic mutual aid. You have no choice but to go. You can't, they can call from St. Bernard without even calling us. They can just automatically dispatch our ladder to St. Bernard if they want to. That's just how it rolls. And yes, it does benefit us if we have an emergency because we'll get that automatic and we don't have to call the comm center and ask for it. But, you know, there's advantages and disadvantages. I'm pointing out a disadvantage that where when people come out with the slowing the runtimes down, that is where we're speaking of slowing the runtimes down. We're slowing down because we're waiting on that mutual aid. That's where it comes from.
Mr. Thompson.
Just to, I want to respond to a couple of things Mr. Dracy said, and I totally hear what you're saying about the response on mutual aid. The issues that I have with the argument, and not that it's not a good argument, is that we had the chief of police and the chief of our fire department stand up here yesterday and look at all of us and tell us that speed and quality of service would not be affected by this. So what we have here is two different, I don't know if it's opinions, two different informed opinions. One based on your experience and one based on our chiefs of our departments' experience. It's very hard for me to overlook the chiefs of our departments coming together to counsel and stating what they stated and think that they weren't being truthful about it. That's all I have to say about that. It's not really like a conversation. It's just, I hear what you're saying, I just want you to know I also hear what they were saying. The second thing is, I'm just going on your numbers, but you talked about, and multiple people have talked about, the increase of 10% call volume for the county, and I'm just going, you said by your numbers, and I'm assuming they're correct, it was 5,500 calls per person per year-ish?
Yeah, it's in that range. It's a little over.
And that sounded like a lie. I'm like, hold it, Cal, that's a lie. And so I wanted to do the math on my own to see what that broke down to per hour. So I estimated 250 working days, which is 50 weeks, at eight-hour days. That broke down to 22 calls per day at 2.75 calls per hour. So that's the call volume that they're handling. By the average that you stated, with 2.75, which is not extreme, you add 10% to the 22 calls per day, you're adding 2.25 calls a day. So I just wanted, the number when looked yearwide seemed enormous when I broke it down to hours, to 2.75 calls per hour versus what will probably round up to three-ish calls per hour with increased call volume. I understand now why the director of Hamilton County 911 Services was saying that he believed that they could absorb that increased call volume. That's just, I'm just trying to think what you said, and I'm like trying to make sense of what they said, and that's kind of why I did that. So that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anyone else? Mr. Dracy.
To kind of respond to you a little bit, so as I said, that was me being generous and giving them their dispatches, okay? He had four different numbers on there, on that sheet. There was 601,000, which I believe was the total calls taken in. There was the 295, which were dispatch calls, so the 601 is probably 15 calls for an auto accident, eight calls for a structure fire, something like that. And then he just broke it down into 295 dispatch calls. So I was being generous and using the 295. When we have a committee of the whole, I'll come back with the total number and break it down from that 601,000. And that way, I'll break it all the way down from that 601,000, so that way we can have a total call, including those multiple calls that weren't dispatched. So that way, you know, like I said, I was trying to be generous to them and give them a little hurrah.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. The motion on the floor, I'm sorry, Mr. Biden.
I just had one more thing. Mr. Dracy, when you were calculating your statistics about the Norwood Dispatch Center, or, actually, about the Hamilton County, what percent of calls did you say were answered within 20 seconds?
97.
Okay. I'll have, thanks.
Anything else, Mr. Bonzel?
Here, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just have a few comments about this resolution that we are getting ready to vote on, and I want to start by saying that I got into government because I enjoy it. I really like what I do. Sometimes we have to make our decisions, and I'm okay to make them. And I'm also a proponent of separation of powers. So, and I realize, and I learn every day, and I enjoy that, that some, we have our responsibilities and administration has their responsibilities. And I've been around long enough to know that some would like to overreach what they think, what their responsibilities are, and they would like to see others. You know, I've been around long enough to know, so I'm not going to support this because I believe in separation of powers. Now, don't mistake that for wanting to get rid of our departments, because I'm a big proponent of our departments. So I won't be supporting this, and I just don't, I want to make it clear that I believe in separation of powers, and I don't believe in overreach, and I believe that's what this may be, so I won't be voting for this. I just don't want it to make, to get the wrong idea that I'm voting against our services, so that will not be the reason why I'm not supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. We have a motion by Mr. Dracy, second by Mr. Kelch to suspend the rules, have all three readings, the first reading in its entirety, the second, third by caption only. Mr. Brayden, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DeNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden's a no.
All members present voting, we have six ayes and one no. Motion passes. Mr. Brayden, may I have first reading in its entirety, second, third by caption only?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Resolution: Expressing counsel's objection to major changes in the status of the Norwood Communication Center Dispatch Services, 911 Services, and status as a public safety answering point, PSAP, without express counsel approval. Whereas the administration has been in discussions with Hamilton County about the county taking over, all are part of the 911 and dispatch services currently performed by employees of the City of Norwood and whereas counsel believes that any agreement with the county or significant changes to the appropriations to accommodate such change would legally require prior counsel approval. And whereas counsel believes that decisions to turn over such an important city service to an outside entity would be a fundamental alteration to the city's identity and whereas such a change is a major policy decision and extremely long-term consequences. And whereas it is counsel's opinion that such a major decision should be made in a reasoned manner, followed serious deliberation and conversation by the administration and counsel. This is those selected by the citizens of Norwood to make policy for the city. And whereas counsel believes actions may have been taken, be underway, or may be taken in the future that could effectively deprive counsel of their freedom to deliberate the merits of such a change without undue pressure or haste. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Norwood. Section 1, Council hereby request that the administration follow a free and fair discussion and debate regarding the pros and cons of transferring functions of a Norwood Communication Center to Hamilton County. Section 2, Council hereby request that until council has approved such a transfer, the administration take no actions that would compromise the city's ability to continue the current operations and functions of the Norwood Communication Center Dispatch Services, 911 Services, and status as a public safety answering point, PSAP. Resolution: Expressing counsel's objection to major changes in the status of the Norwood Communication Center Dispatch Services, 911 Services, and status as a public- Communication Center Dispatch Services, 911 Services, and status as a public safety answering point, PSAP, without express counsel approval. Resolution: Expressing counsel's objection to major changes in the status of the Norwood Communication Center Dispatch Services, 911 Services, and status as a public safety answering point, PSAP, without express counsel approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. May I have a motion? Mr. Dracy.
Make a motion to pass.
Motion to pass. May I have a second? Mr. Kelch.
A second.
Any further discussion? Mr. DiNardo?
It'll be quick. I am glad for those that brought it forward a couple weeks ago, that we got to have the discussion that we had twice, but mostly last night. That was probably really the most important thing for me to hear. So I'm glad that we got to at least have the start of those conversations. I don't know if this is for, I think this is for Mr. Gary, but probably more for counsel. Have we decided how approval is going to take place? Like, what does that look like? When it's, because in the resolution, it talks about till counsel approves such a transfer. Is that, what does that look like?
Mr. Gary.
My basic understanding is that the mayor has the authority to, in effect, fold the Norwood Communication Center, and I'm probably stating it very untactfully, but wind up the communication center, but then it's up to the council to approve a contract with Hamilton County.
Right.
And it would be up to the council to approve the appropriations pursuant to that contract, as well as the financial recovery plan that would adopt those numbers. Does that make any sense to you?
I think so. I'd like you to correct.
In other words, the council legally needs to be involved in this process.
Yeah. I think that we heard a bit of that from Mr. Moore, and for me, it kind of felt like timing was the question, is that it would be good if we had the discussion, and then council was able to show a direction, and then a potential impact or nothing would happen to the current dispatch, and then potentially, we would approve money or funding or something like that. So for me, it was just timing. So that kind of feels like, and I'd like you to correct me, that we should do either a resolution or at least some sort of statement of approval such that the, you know, then the administration could go do their thing. I think that's what we're, the outcome of this resolution, or at least my interpretation of this, passing this resolution of approving such a transfer. I think that's what it means. Would you agree with that statement, that we would either make a second resolution that we would either approve or reject moving forward?
Let's put it this way, from the standpoint of orderly management, I would hope that the council would be involved in the process of deciding what's going to occur, because if the mayor simply shut down the comm center or made arrangements to shut down the comm center, that's only, you know, a part of the inquiry. And I think that this council could offer some guidance to the mayor, the mayor could then act, and then the council could ordain a contract with the county if that's the direction that the council and the administration decide to go. Does that make any sense to you?
I'm probably being the thick one, because I'm just looking at exactly what the thing is we're supposed to express as approval or not. You were kind of pounding, so maybe you know.
Mr. Thompson.
I don't, I don't know that I know, but I think with this, I think what Mr. Gary is saying and what you're asking and what this resolution is suggesting happening are all in line with each other and are all, in fact, the same thing. And in reality, I just, for me, I'm going to vote for this resolution just on principle. However, we already will be getting a vote on the major parts of this deal going through. I don't think we have to have a resolution that says we want to have a resolution that says we want to allow the mayor to go do what he wants to do. I think the mayor gets to go do what he wants to do, and then he gets to present that to us in the form of a contract. And we are the ones who either approve that contract, approve appropriations. But to me, that's covered off in here. And on top of that, and this is just my take, and Mr. Gary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, resolutions really don't mean anything. They're just nice letters that we all vote on. They're not legally binding, and it's just, it's a nice to have. So we could say that we want this to happen and send it to the mayor, he can veto it if he wants to, or he can accept it if he wants to, but in the end, we're going to have ordinances sent to us that we're going to vote on that will approve or not approve this transfer. This, to me, like I said, voting on it in principle, I think it overcomplicates things because it's just, I don't know, it's saying that we want to do the stuff that we're already going to do.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Bonzel.
Did you, I mean, Mr. Brayden, did you, you haven't got to speak yet.
I'm not, if you'd like to go first, it doesn't matter to me, but.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, so I.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that, and I understand that, and I respect that, Mr. Thompson. I just, I want to just say, I want to just give you my point of view here, and maybe I can be corrected. I would have a question for our law department if he so be, would take it. So this resolution that we have today, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't it be an ordinance? If, let's say this was an ordinance, if we wanted to make an ordinance of this exact resolution here. If that was an ordinance, and we wanted to ordain that law or here, do you have, if, let's say this was an ordinance, would you have a statement on that?
Mr. Gary.
Well, what the resolution is, is a sense of counsel. It's not, it doesn't bind the city to do anything, it doesn't bind the administration to do anything, doesn't bind the council to do anything. What this resolution does is expresses the sense of counsel, that the council wants discussion and debate about the pros and cons, and not to go forward without that discussion and debate. The difference between a resolution and an ordinance is that an ordinance has the, what amounts to the force of, not law exactly, but potentially law. For example, you know, this council routinely in public works-type projects says, I'm, we're authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract. Doesn't mean that the cities, or the city administration has to do that, but the council's authorizing that, and that authority is required by law. This is not, this resolution is not required by law. And again, the council has a pretty discreet authority relative to the city administration. The mayor can change course as to, you know, how, you know, how the comm center works. That's his authority. What this council has is the authority to authorize a contract and to control the purse strings, basically, subject to the supervision of the Financial Recovery Commission at this point. So it's really two different kinds of authorities.
Thank you, Mr. Gary.
But they have to work together in order to actually work.
I'm going to respond.
Just a follow-up from Mr. Gray.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, I think what I was getting at was, the reason why I won't be supporting it is because if we was, if this was, this is basically a kind letter, and, you know, I'm not a big proponent of that, but if we, if this was an ordinance, we would be basically instructing him to, you know, he takes us a oath and sworn duty for his duties, and we would be basically taking his duties, taking the mayor's and the administration's duties away, and that's kind of, and he has law abiding. So that's why I won't be supporting, it's just a friendly letter, and I believe in separation of powers, so.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I mean, I agree with Mr. Thompson's assessment about the resolution, how it has no force of effect when it comes to, you know, it can't change anybody, force anybody to do anything. But I do think that our words matter as a body, you know, and I think Mr. Thompson would agree with that. I'm not saying he disagreed with it, but I think in general, I think we probably could do resolutions more often to express our feelings about things as a body. And you've seen resolutions that we've done with COVID-19 and other things this year to kind of do that. I think we had a resolution for, it was a Pride Month this year as well, so, which that seems like so long ago, you know, from now. But anyway, so long story short is, I will be supporting it. As I said previously, there is one item I want to bring here, and this is one that, you know, I just want to call out to people that vote for this, that you're supporting this. It's the second from the last whereas clause, where it says, whereas it is counsel's opinion that such a major decision should be, should be made in a reasoned manner following serious deliberation and conversation by the administration and council. And I just want to remind the people that are deliberating on this that you should give this your full consideration and look at all the facts and not just make your decision based on, you know, what you feel like the political leanings of the community are. I personally was able to go to the Hamilton County Communication Center on Saturday. Mr. Brayden was there as well, as well as the mayor. Before Saturday, I will say, I was much more ambivalent than I am now about this potential. I was able to, you know, basically grill Mr. Knapp for an hour, and the mayor was, I think, had another appointment that had to get to, but I extended the time probably longer than he probably wanted to be there. But I was able to grill him for an hour about just all these different things, about what if, what if, what if, how's this work, how's that work? I was able to watch calls go from screen to here to being radioed out, and it was an impressive operation. And I'm just going to say, again, I think that if you're going to not support this, I think it's very important to go and actually see it yourself and actually be fully informed because it changed my perspective to see exactly how it works and to learn how it's going to work and learn, what if somebody says this, you know, colloquial name of something, that they'll know what it is, because we're going to report all that out before we start there. So we're going to let them know what it is, so. Anyways, long story short, just wanted to call that out, and like I said, I'll be voting in favor. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Mr. Gary.
This is a point of clarity. Resolutions are just statements, and ordinances are actions. It's kind of the easiest way to try to remember that. Resolution's just a statement, usually from counsel, and ordinances are actions that need to be taken. My question is, who asked, or who drew this up? Who asked for this to be drawn up and use this language?
Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you. I did want to follow up to, like, I have been to our own communication center too, and I've gotten to watch them, I've gotten to tour that as well, so it wasn't just the Hamilton County, I've been to ours as well. I requested that this, I requested this resolution be drawn up. I know Mr. Dracy requested something similar, but, yeah, we originally, like, were talking about potentially ordinance, the law department was able to adjust our thinking on this to, you know, that a resolution would be more in order, just based on the statutory authority of the mayor. So that's kind of where it happened. The language kind of, the language came from the law department in the sense that they took policy direction from, I guess, what I was looking for, and I'm sure what Mr. Dracy was looking for. And there were a few minor edits, but overall, the law department, they did a good job writing up what I thought was an expression of what I wanted to personally express.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anything further, Mr. Gary? Anyone else? We have a motion by Mr. Dracy, second by Mr. Kelch. Please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden's a no.
All members present voting, we have six ayes, one no. Motion passes. Moving on to item M, administrative reports. Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate all the deliberation, all the debate, all the, regarding the pros and cons of the change to the dispatch and the way that the city handles dispatch. This is, in my, from my records, this is the third council meeting, this has actually been debated and pros and cons, and a lot of discussion on numbers. So it's all good dialogue. I will receive your kind letter or your resolution. I understand why it's there. I understand the context that it's presented, and I think that, I'm pretty certain that this debate and the pros and cons and discussion will continue as we work through this process. So I really do appreciate that. I do want to talk about some of the other things that are going on in the city. When we talk about streets, the street engineering study is just about complete. They did 90 to 95% of the fieldwork, and the data gathering is completed. Pavement condition ratings is, are, will be coming out, and it'll be a great, it'll be an absolutely great tool for us to have in the future as we are planning out the streets that will be repaved this year in 2020, Shanmore and Cathedral. We've got Indian Mount sort of ongoing now, just getting, it's a late start, it's been a tough year, late start for them, but I was glad to hear that the men working signs are up, and there's some cones on the corners and different things, that a lot of work getting started there. So that's Indian Mount, Parmally, Sheridan, and Wakefield. All of this, all of these streets were streets that were put into the RFP, you know, a couple years ago. So it was foresight of previous councils that have put these streets into action, and they're terrible streets, they need work, there's no doubt about it. I'm sure that when the study comes back, they'll say these are the streets that need to be done. Next year, for 2021, we've got a street that is Lincoln, which is right over here, a terrible street that's scheduled or we're planning on getting done, Slane, Regent, and then Forest Avenue between, from Kenilworth down to the underpass, the bridge underpass, is a terrible area right in front of Siemens and all through that area, and then Kenilworth, Forest, De Smith are other areas that we're looking at. And we'll add to it, if we can find more funding, we'll add to the streets that we're trying to do next year. And then we definitely will be coming to the Streets Committee with the engineering study to try to help plan out and put in the FRP what streets we'll be moving forward with from there on out. But it'll be, it'll be an awesome tool where we can really look at the streets on a subjective level, you know, let's look at what the engineers tell us and work on from there. So numerous changes to street corners, to putting in handicapped access corners, which are also, I'll call them stroller-friendly, which is great for our walkability, we have a walking neighborhood. And then a lot of catch basins have been rebuilt, and I know Public Works has been cleaning out a lot of catch basins. We've found a lot that are really not taking water, so they're working on that. Lights, the Norwood sign, I'm sorry to say that the Norwood sign is not just a challenge of light bulbs being out, it's a challenge of the design of that. The only one that's letting the light through, there's a plastic letters, the letters are all plastic within there, and basically what they've done is just frosted over through the, through the sunlight hitting them, and they're not letting the light out. So it's not, that was the first thing I said, when Mr. Gabbard, Councilman Gabbard, when you brought that up, I said, it seems like their lights are on, but they're not, well, it's not just a couple bulbs out, it's actually the fixtures that are going to be a challenge, and they are, the way they're, the way they're installed, it's not going to be easy, quick fix. It's not like you can just pull out the plastic and put a new plastic piece in there. So Clint is scratching his head and trying to figure out how to get that fixed. We had hoped to have that taken care of by this council meeting, so it was mentioned at the last council meeting, and I'd like to be able to say, we got it, but we didn't get it. And then we are working on the lateral lights, improving the lights there, trying to get at least the lights on at all the entrance ramps and exit ramps, things like that, which are ODOT standards, and we're making good progress there. I think we'll start seeing some of that stuff lighted up. If you do see a street light out, if there's a street light in your community, a security light or a safety light, you know, a lot of our people will say, well, why do we put, why do we have a street light there? Well, most of the time, it's because it's at an intersection where there've been challenges. If you see one of those out, really, it's important to go ahead and call Public Works. And you don't even have to call Public Works. If you look at the street light, there should be a number on there, and you can, you can get on your computer and report that right to Duke Energy. That's probably the quickest way to get a street light replaced or repaired, because we don't do that in-house, that's Duke Energy. But if you do call Public Works, we're more than happy to work on that and try to get that street light back up. We've been actually very successful. If you drive up and down Montgomery Road, we've got most of the street lights back up and operational. The Norwood lateral, again, is a mess. The trash just builds up there so fast. The trash just builds up there so fast. We've got to remove vegetation along the side of the lateral. We cleaned, we did heavy cleaning on it two times this year, and it still looks as bad as ever when it comes to trash. So we've got to look at, really, what we can do to try to, try to fix that. The problem is that we have basically just a bunch of on-ramps right in our part of it, and everybody who gets on there, if they've got a pickup truck, it just sucks everything out of the back of their pickup truck or, you know, so we've got, and there's a ton of traffic through there. So we've got to really find a good solution to taking care of that trash and then trash over all, you know, City Public Works has been working on. We talked about, we've talked at previous meetings about another ambulance, and we were able to purchase an ambulance using COVID funds. So we should have that in the firehouse by the end of the month, which is right around the corner. It's going to be a tight delivery, but it's, it is coming in, and that's, that's the one that has the upgraded compartments area to try to keep bacterium down and reduce the spread. So that's an important part of it. Appointments, there's a couple of appointment letters that'll be read a little bit later on in the meeting. We got appointments going on with the Arts Board. I'm glad to say we've got two people that have stepped up for the Arts Board. I've got two other good candidates. I spoke to one that I thought would be really great, really was a frontrunner when it came to outdoor arts works and basically the organization artworks. And she had actually said that she would be involved as we got going with this, but she's not interested in a position like that. But you guys set the criteria where they're three-year, they're actually a three-year appointment, but it was set up where the first seating of the board, it's a one, two, and a three-year. So you'll hear those appointments being made, the two-year and the three-year positions being made. My goal of that is to put together that crew and then meet in January and then try to figure out exactly how that Arts Board is going to be running. And maybe, you know, it's the second-year person is the president, and then as they rotate through, when you get put on, your first year, you're just on the Arts Board, the second year, you're the president, and then the third year, you're the past president and helping the new president come on to try to keep that transition. So there's a lot of structure when, when an ordinance gets passed like this for the administration of it and figuring out the structure of it, how's it going to work, and when are they going to meet? And then what's the criteria? How does information get to them from the building department when somebody? So there's a lot of structure we're trying to work out and put in place for the Arts Board. Same thing, the Planning Commission. We had a member, Chris Brown, who took a better position in his personal life and his work life, and that stopped him from being able to chair the Planning Commission. So he has stepped down from the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. So there has to be a liaison, a person who's on the BZA that is also on the Planning Commission, and we have a person that's on the BZA that took that, actually accepted that position. So she will be, you'll hear about that appointment. And then we are appointing an architect and a friend of the city who lives in the city and has been involved in a lot of other stuff to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So we're glad, we're glad that he has stepped up to do that. Those are a couple of appointments that are going on. There are still a couple of other appointments that need to be made through the end of the year, so I'll be working on them. It is, it's overlooked many times, the work, the volunteer work these people that get appointed to these boards do. The BZA can be a hot button, you know, that's, it's a hot potato area. Same thing for planning at times. There's, there are some interesting things and interesting discussions at those, and these are all volunteers that step up and community members that are willing to do it. Structure has to be there to keep the city running right. I do want to talk about the holiday lights. The city is really, I wrote down here, the city is really showing great holiday spirit. Debbie and I, my wife and I drove around the city the other day in the evening, and we were just fascinated with all the effort. And I don't know if it's COVID or what it is, but it seems like there's more lights, they're more vibrant, there's just so much more effort being put out. So if you get a chance, drive around in the evening. I know that we're putting pictures on the Norwood, the City of Norwood Facebook page, and we'll continue doing that all the way through Christmas. And if you see a house that you know of, you know, point out what street it's on so people know where to drive down through there. And then I do want to mention that New Haven Baptist Church had the live nativity scene up on Indian Mount. I don't know how many people got to drive past it, but it was actually last Saturday night, and I think it was a great event. So even some of the, some of the churches are doing interesting events to get by and really celebrate the holiday spirit. I want to give kudos to Tom Perry and all the staff at the City of Norwood. We had open enrollment for healthcare, the benefits, and we opened it up, and we got all but two, all but two of our employees got in on that. This year, we had a call-in center, so you could call, and they would sort of guide you through. They would talk to you about what benefits you need, you know, specifically, how, what's the best benefits package for you so you can save money on your healthcare? And I think it went well. I did hear a couple of negatives about it, but I think it went very well overall, you know, trying to get efficient and really effective insurance for you. It's a challenge. For me, it's just a packet of information they send out, and I've got to sort of scratch my head and figure it out. I think it went well having them and that closed. The nice thing about that being opened and then closed is we've got a good picture of what our, what our healthcare cost is going to be for the next year, for the next 12 months. So that'll be something that we work into the, into the system. And then the last thing I have is on our water system. I know there's been quite a bit of discussion on our water system. On December 1st, Tuesday, December 1st, many, there were many, actually, there was a Zoom call, this was a big meeting for the City of Norwood because there were 11 EPA representatives on this call. There were actually eight Norwood representatives that, I saw their emails. I don't know that all of them were on there the whole time, but some of you were involved in that call. There were three Greater Cincinnati Waterworks representatives, and then there were two members from Arcadis, which is a designing consulting engineering firm that has done the hydraulic, it's called the hydraulic study. And I think of hydraulics as being, you know, something that would be on a backhoe that would use to lift things up. But well, hydraulics in this instance is talking about our water system, the hydraulics of our water system. So there was a PowerPoint presentation that the engineering crew gave to the EPA, and actually Clint Zimmerman, our Public Works Director, Superintendent of Public Works, ran the meeting, and the guy hit an absolute home run. You know, last year at this time, the EPA, and they said it, they were extremely nervous about the City of Norwood's water system and the oversight and the direction that it is going in. But with this hydraulic study and with all the, we had, we had orders, and this is something that, I think it was discussed in previous councils, and I think it's been discussed in maybe at the beginning of the year when we talked about doing this, this hydraulic study, the engineering study of it. The EPA has given us orders, and they've given us a specific timeline when we have to have all of this work completed. And this is something that had to be signed off on by the mayor. This is something that the law department reviewed, and they said, I don't know, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot to it. But basically, it's the Ohio EPA, and they were very nervous about our water system. I think they are much more comfortable about our water system now. Clint has gotten involved with some of the different operations of our water system that needed to be upgraded, some different pressure relief valves and pressure regulating valves, and he's looked at the different, different areas that our water system is fed from. They did an available fire flow analysis on all of these. They did water pressure testing in pretty much every area. So there's, there's a whole map. And I, actually, if any of you would like, I can email you this, the PDF that came with that program. I'll send it out to you. I'll just send it out to all of you so you can take a look at it. But it really brought up, it's really some interesting, because it talks about what areas in the city have lower water pressure, right? And some, there's probably some residents out there that, on my house, you know, I'm up on the hill and I have a problem with it. So that was an interesting part of it. They also talked about the water towers, and they gave us a couple of different scenarios on the water tower. So right now, it looks to me, and I think Clint will back me up on this, that we will be able to, with a couple of changes, with some changes, and when I say this, they're not real cheap changes, but we're going to have to spend some money, but we feel like we can, we can make some changes to our distribution center and where it's fed and then we will be able to eliminate the water towers within our system. And that would be a huge, huge savings for the water distribution system. So there's, there's constant, there really is constant effort that Clint has been putting into this. One of the big things that he has, he has been working on really is not just getting this hydraulic study completed, but he's got, he's got about five or six other orders that are coming right at him. And there's a timeline to all of this. So he's got, it's somewhat of a pressure situation for him being the operator of record for our distribution system. Everyone should know that our water system comes out of Fund 50. So our general operating fund is 01, but our, our water system is out of Fund 50, which is segregated from our operating funds. So even if we decided that we were going to make a change there, it wouldn't put money into our operating funds. It would save money. And I'm, I'll tell you that, I'm the first and the biggest advocate for getting Radio Read and for improving some, improving our metering system, meters on our water system because we have a ton of loss, a ton of water loss, and we are paying for that on a regular basis. So there's a lot of improvements that need to be made, and quite frankly, if you guys look at this PDF and say, hey, can Clint come in and talk to us about this? You know, he is, he really, his presentation skills are outstanding. And he has, I'll say that the Ohio EPA, there were probably six people on that meeting, high-level Ohio EPA people that commended Clint on the work that he's done and on the progress that he's made and on the confidence that they have that the City of Norwood is moving in the right direction with this water system. Is it perfect? No. I'd like to say it is. But we're making progress, and Clint has, Clint has led this and done a great job at it. So, but I will send the PDF out to all of you. And then I guess the last thing I would say is, you know, with all the changes, different things that we're trying to take care of and trying to do in the City of Norwood, you know, it's always, there's always going to be discussion. There's always going to be some debate. That is, that's part of the system and the democracy that we live in. Somebody came up to me at the end of the council meeting and said, hey, this isn't personal. And I think Mr. Braden makes it clear, it's not personal. And I don't look at these discussions as being personal, and they're not attacks on me. As the mayor, I have to make tough decisions, and there are times where they're not going to be the, maybe the decision that you want me to make, but we'll work through them, and that's, that's how it happens. This, there was, through the whole discovery stage, I had said, we're going to have to have certain things taken care of and understand, understood, and we're going to have to communicate them, and that's what we're working through right now. I don't know of a better way to get this information out to others, and we're going to have, we're going to have differences of opinion at times, but that's okay. That's, that's just the nature of the beast. So don't feel that I am, I feel personally attacked by things that you're saying about a program that I'm trying to move forward, which I think will improve the city. Because I would like to say I've never made a mistake, but I did once, just once. Now, I did multiple times, and I learned from them. So I sat in your seat for six years, you know? I was a council member for six years. I sat in this seat prior to this time, in 2003, I was sitting in the mayor's seat. You know, I did go through the police academy. I did fight fires. I've got a lot of background and experience in this stuff. I didn't do it as much as Mr. Dracy's done. I clearly, I clearly did not do it as much as either of the chiefs have done. But I've went through some of that stuff, and I do think I have a good background and I have enough knowledge to really listen to what's being presented and try to make the right decision for the city because I think that's what we're all trying to do. So, you know, I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that, and, you know, we'll just keep moving forward. That's really what it all comes down to.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Any questions or comments? Mr. Kelch?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could, through the chair of the mayor, just regarding Elm. The last communication we got, MSD kind of decided they don't agree with the assessment that they gave back in the early 2000s on that, that shared kind of a project there. Kind of two-part, I wanted to try to see if there's any updates since then on, on that front and share also and kind of see if there's an update on, sorry. I was invited to attend Zoom meetings for the MSD's capital improvements kind of plan they're putting together, December 3rd, December 10th, by the mayor's executive assistant, Mr. Perry. I was able to attend the 3rd, he was going to do that, and I'm going to attend on the 10th to try to fight for that project. I was hoping that you might have an update for us as a council and the residents at home, kind of where we're at there, what we're trying to do, what our next steps look like?
I don't have a good update on Elm Avenue right now. I've been working on a few other projects that have been sort of priority to, to get them done, but I can talk to Mr. Perry and discuss where he's at. I know the last time he was struggling to get some of the website stuff to recognize the City of Norwood's applications, and I think that he has that completed, but I, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Kelch, I don't have a good answer for that one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Dracy?
Mr. Mayor, I'm glad that Elm Avenue's kind of taken a back burner to our discussion of dispatch, even though this has started back in January. But also, you're also alluding to that the water system is going to need continuous upgrades. Is that correct?
Excuse me, did you say the water system?
The water system's going to need continuous upgrades?
Yes, we're, we continue every day to improve upon the water system. And Clint continues to work to make that water system better every day. Yes.
So, so just like dispatch equipment, our water system also needs upgrades? That's where I'm kind of alluding to, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, I don't think that signifies a response, frankly, because, yeah. So my question for the mayor, well, I had a couple of things. You know, Planning Commission, I talk about it, it seems like every meeting. I didn't get a chance to watch the full Planning Commission meeting, but I did get to watch some of it. First, congratulations to Mr. Brown on being appointed the chairperson. So it just seems to me, again, there's still a disconnect between what we saw from the Joseph Group when they presented their, they wanted ordinance changes to the zoning, and they also wanted preliminary and final PED plan approvals, and there was not one commentary comment about anything that they needed to change on there. And then I only got to watch part of the apartment building on Sherman, but, you know, we're sitting here nitpicking them on, they need more dumpsters, or how many dumpsters they have to have, or exact locations of them, how far their tenants have to walk when their, if tenants feel like they have to walk too far to the dumpster, then they won't rent the apartment there. So I guess I'm still just kind of concerned at the disconnect between the lack of interaction around Joseph Group and then the just complete, you know, micromanaging of other things. And so I didn't know if you were thinking that, is the Planning Commission going to be more like it was at the last meeting, or is it going to be more like it was with Joseph Group? Like, where is it going to go? And then also, I'd like to know what kind of training you all are planning on, you know, implement. I think we really need to fund some training for the Planning Commission to, and I think that'd be a great expense, to help them learn about some of the things that they need to be looking out for and need to do. And I was just curious if you all had any plans for training.
Mayor Schneider?
Well, thank you. Really, our Planning Commission will get better and better as we go along, with guidance from people like you and others that send emails and talk to us about it as we move, and the Planning Commissioners get more comfortable in their positions. You know, losing Chris Brown, who was a person who had a, I don't know, he had a master's or his?
Some kind of master's.
He had something in urban planning and some, you know, historic preservation, I think. You know, losing somebody like him is tough. We put John Brown in as the chairperson of it. He's been on that board for a long time. It's going to take him, he did a great job, quite frankly, in the meeting, but it's going to take a little time for him to get real comfortable in that position. Sandra Kelly, who has asked me about that training, that exact same question, we had a discussion about the Ohio Municipal League, maybe the Hamilton County Municipal League. All of these organizations have trainings that normally would go on throughout the year, but of course, with COVID, it's much like some of the training offerings that came out in November and December last year that I'd hoped council members would be able to attend were canceled because of COVID. So hopefully, all of that opens back up. Actually, Sandra had a couple of other organizations that she mentioned, and I said, well, you know, let me know about those as they come. I think all of our, all of our commissions, our Civil Service Commission, our planning, our BZA, all of them need to have training. And really, it's just whether it's, you know, the ability to run the meeting properly and know what all the legal, you know, requirements are is one part of it, but having a good But having a good understanding of what, what a planning commission is really responsible for and what a B, what the BZA is really responsible for, those are, those are all trainings that I, I would like for all of our people to go through absolutely.
Mr. Fonzell?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I appreciate the comments there. And I do agree. I mean, I think, uh, making training opportunities available for all of the boards, I think would be a great thing. Uh, and, and, you know, we really haven't had a lot of extra, you know, revenue or extra ability to do that, at least my first couple of years on council. But, uh, I think those kinds of things would be an investment. So I would definitely would encourage your administration and you to look, seek out trainings and try to, you know, encourage, I mean, it's their volunteer boards, I think all of them. So, you know, it's at their own pleasure. But I mean, it sounds like Sandra Kelly, you said, is, is willing to do some. And I would just encourage you all to explore that. And if there's funding that's needed, I would definitely encourage you to work with the finance committee if that's needed. I think there probably is funding already there that could, could deal with it because I just think it's of the utmost importance. A lot of these decisions are being made, whether it's planning or even BZA stuff, like they're permanent decisions. So it's not like, uh, we can just fix them with a policy change next year. I mean, those kinds of things will then sit there at that site for, you know, for many, many years to come. So, thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments for Mayor Schneider? Mr. Gabbard?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, in regards to Cathedral Avenue, um, the, the street itself looks good, but, and I asked this early on when we, when we first announced that we were going to do Cathedral, were we going to look at the curbs? And the curbs, like if the curb was cracked, they got replaced, the section would be replaced. But as I examined it today, there's, I thought that there was a standard that the curb needed to be at least so high. These curbs, the water, when it comes down, it's just going to wash away. It's just going to be, there's areas literally that there's not an inch of curb, not even an inch. It's just like the black top goes right to the grass. And that's a little disappointing that I would think if we're going to put that much money into these streets because, you know, once we do a street based on our history, we're not going to get back around to it for, you know, 30 years. So I would, I would think that we would try to, you know, make sure that everything's done very well so we can get that time out of it. So if somebody could look at that, I, I think that the curbs probably need to be readdressed, you know, on Cathedral. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Anyone else? Mr. Brady?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I, um, that administration report was, was very impressive, this one thing after another work all around the city of Norwood. I could think of, I could think of plenty of, of other situations, other projects that are being done that you didn't even mention. So, and then, and then, you know, we want to, we want to, we want to talk about Elm Avenue and then talk about changes to the BZA. And that's a, that's a lot on your plate, man. That's a whole lot's going on here in the city of Norwood. And somebody that's been sitting here for years now, I can tell you that this is, there's a change happening here and that is a whole lot going on there. That's a one heck of a report. Now, what you didn't hear, what I didn't hear is, um, do we have an update on, um, our Orphan Bridge on Section Avenue? I know there's work being done there. You didn't mention that. So, and, you know, also work being done around the city hall concrete and then the pad on, on the fire department. There's just work being done everywhere. So, um, you know, I just want to commend you for that, but I didn't hear anything on the bridge on section. I know they're working on that as we speak too, and I didn't hear that. So that's, um, you got, you got anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so I'll revise my report, John, so that I can, I'm in Councilman Braden. Um, Section Avenue, the Section Avenue Bridge is being worked on because they, the bridge inspection revealed that the transition between the pavement and the concrete, um, that, where the bridge connects had to be repaired. So it is, it's, I'll say it's a temporary fix, but it's really going to last us another 10 years is what they're saying, I think. So that work is being completed and that's an important bridge. A lot of people, it connects a lot of people, but we are looking at down the road having to replace that part of the bridge and it is the city's responsibility. So we've got that going on. There was concrete work completed at city hall at the sidewalk area. Basically what, what we found was that the concrete at city hall was sloped towards city hall. So remember the meeting room down in the, the lower area of city hall? I won't call it the basement. I'll call it the lower area. That makes it sound much better. But where we were having water going in there, it's because all the water was being directed against the wall and down into the foundation. So we feel that that's been corrected now and we're going to be able to open up that, that conference room down there again for use. That was a primary use, primarily used for council committee meetings, um, in years past. We haven't been able to use it for a while. Um, even the environment or the economic development office down there is going to be utilized again. So we, that was a, a change that was needed. In front of the firehouse, we had concrete work done and the, the drains, the, the work right there was completed because those were, um, falling, basically the, the concrete needed to be replaced and it was letting water in. And then we also have work being completed at Public Works. I don't know if any of you have been to Public Works lately, but for the last 20 years, the grates at the front of all the garage doors have been torn up, fallen apart. And so we're starting to get those repaired. I, I'm surprised we haven't, we probably have had city workers that have busted an ankle on those grates, but, um, we're getting that repaired and we're getting that parking lot, trying to get that parking lot taken care of. Um, so we are, we are, we continue to try to make, you know, improvements to get our house in order, um, so that, you know, in the future we, we can work on other things.
Do you ever sleep?
I do, yeah.
Goodness, that's a whole lot of stuff, man.
We've got a good team at city hall. We've got movers and shakers. The chiefs are doing a great job. There's a lot of employees that have really stepped up and are really taken care of, of a lot. We've got, we've got the police academy that's going to come on, come back online next year and we're going to have a citizens' police academy. And we're going to have, um, citizens on patrol housed in there and we're going to get our, our neighborhood watch going again next year utilizing the police academy. So there's, there's a lot of good things on the horizon for the city. And, and quite frankly, employees, staff that are just chomping at the bit to get some of these programs going again that they had fun with and really enjoyed getting going and, and they see the results of it and will see the results of it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fonzell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so I wanted to talk about the US playing card redevelopment or, uh, soon to be named Factory 52. Uh, so I know that there was, uh, one, I just kind of want to learn about the, what's going on with the TIF negotiations on that. And then two, I'd like to talk about the traffic study. They did come to the planning commission meeting that I was at where Joseph Group's kind of slid on through. And you made a statement there that no traffic recommendations are going to be presented to anybody at the city before the city administration signed off or something like that. And so, you know, kind of concerned me because I think that, uh, I mean, residents should be kind of concerned because, you know, depending on how many traffic lights have to be added or whether there's other opportunities, maybe adding a roundabout or something instead of a traffic light. So, uh, TIF is one question, then the other one is just about the traffic plan. What updates do you have? And then, um, you know, potentially I think in new business, I'm probably going to refer some of this to, uh, the economic development committee so we can get Nick and his team in here to talk to council. So, uh, yeah, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Schneider?
So the first part is, it is officially called Factory 52. They have a logo. They, they, um, came to the planning commission with their, with their phase one, uh, plans. It does include their traffic study information and we talked intensively, I would say we've, we've talked many times about the traffic study and what needs to be done or what we feel needs to be done, the city compared to what they claim needs to be done. We talked about, uh, the inability to do a good traffic study with COVID going on and the predictions for the, the traffic that will be there. It's, it is really a challenge at this time. Now, that's not to say that developers aren't able to predict what the, what the traffic flow will be there, but they are, they're looking at that closely. And we've stated that, you know, they're going to have, there's going to have to be money. If you recall, when the Rookwood development went on, we had all sorts of traffic problems and there were changes made and lights put in and, and there were, there were some different things that happened even after the Rookwood development was, uh, put through. So we're going to have to put funding vehicles in place to make sure that we have that capability in the future as traffic sort, sort of really cranks up that we can make changes. Whether we put a, a traffic light back in at Kenworth and Beach, which was there years ago, I think just in the last five years, it was taken, that traffic light was taken out because it was so old, it wasn't warranted to be there and the city really didn't have the money to purchase the new equipment that, that would cost to go in there. Um, we also, we're, we're looking at, you know, really, um, park and forest is another area that is, that's where the islands are. That's going to be an interesting area where, whether we can put a traffic light in there or, you know, their suggestion was a roundabout. I, it's hard to do a roundabout in such a pedestrian friendly area. And the roundabouts that I've seen, which I've, a lot of them in Columbus, they take up a large area, a big area. So even the one in Blue Ash, if you look at that one at Summit Park, um, it takes a pretty big area up. Um, so there's still, there's still work to be done on that. The part of the, the financing, financing and special financing, now I'm, I'm very pleased to say that we've got not only Pat Woodside, who's been our bond, bond counsel, working with us for a while and has a great relationship, I think a great relationship with our law department. But then we also have Andy Brossert, which with municipal advisors that we just brought on, and he's looking at all the TIF, uh, programs or TIF, um, financing that we've done on different projects. And he's already made some suggestions and found some flaws and, and is trying to work us in the right direction. But municipal advisors, I think is, is somebody that's really on our team. And Andy Brossert, bringing him on, I think has been a great part of it. Of course, having HCDC engaged, the Hamilton County Development Corp. engaged has been a huge bonus to us also. So we've got really some, some real strength there and working in conjunction with the school board, um, working with the, the treasurer, with the school board and with their bond council. Um, so we've got a good team, I think, and we're, we're, we're working in the right direction. Of course, the developer wants the best deal they can get and the city wants the best deal we can get. So we're really trying to find a mutually beneficial, you know, um, funding vehicle that will get all the infrastructure improvements that we want in place and, and that property looking great, so.
Great. Mr. Fonzell?
Yeah, thank you. That answers the questions. I appreciate it. Uh, it sounds like the discussions are ongoing. Um, so I just have had a few residents reach out to me. I mean, they're just concerned with preemptively adding too many traffic lights or even any at all, not knowing if they're needed. I mean, you know, right now I know that Park Avenue is kind of a little bit of a cut-through street. If you're coming from Oakley, you know, you take a right on Beach, you take a left on Park. And there's so many of our traffic lights in the city right now that, you know, uh, there's basically you've got a forest, oh, sorry, excuse me, Smith Road at Forest and the Smith Road at Floral, where it just seems like you're always waiting at a traffic light there. And, you know, with Park Avenue, I don't think it's going to be a two-phase thing. It's going to have to be three probably with the way that's a two on Park. Probably won't be able to have green on both sides of Park at the same time. Maybe you will, maybe you'll be able to figure it out, but I just know that residents, I've had a couple of residents reach out to me again, not wanting to be, uh, having traffic lights where there truly aren't needed. So, I mean, they seem to want the money set aside, you know, so that we can add them, but like they don't want them to be added where the city would have to then maintain them unnecessarily. So just wanted to make sure that you knew that and heard that.
Thank you, Ms. Fonzell. Anyone else? Any, any questions or comments for Mayor Schneider? Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah, one more thing. Um, the, you, you mentioned that we've kind of teamed up with, uh, HCDC. And, um, I would like us to, to try to, to, to look in to see exactly what they do. Uh, I know of a small business that went, wanted to, they sat down with HCDC. Um, they were told, you know, they, you know, they, the H, I'm not saying this right, but HCDC asked, you know, like kind of what you were looking for, how much money you're looking for. And they said they only deal with like, you know, $500,000 and above. That's really not small business. You know, if we're trying to attract small business into Norwood, especially with the new plan, uh, from that grant and trying to build into some of these small businesses, we need somebody to kind of fight for us. They, you know, they were kind of told, just, you know, go to your bank and try to work something out there. If we could look into, to that and, and how we can get a better plan for small business, true small business that, that we can, um, hopefully start attracting to Norwood. And, uh, I just wanted to throw that out to you just so hopefully somebody can be looking at it or discussions with, uh, HCDC.
Mayor Schneider?
Hamilton County Development Corp. is multifaceted, so they have specific areas. They have the business incubator that's over there also. Um, what we are engaged them, and when I say engaged, we hired HCDC and we have a senior development director that's working with our staff at city hall on development, on res, on business retention, on those things. Uh, and they work in conjunction with the small business loan part of that. Um, I'm not sure, I'll have to dig in deeper on what, what we could do potentially to open more doors for us or for our, our community members and people who want to, um, get started in that manner. So I, I'll dig into that a little further.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Moving on to item N, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business this evening? Mr. Fonzell?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. So at the last meeting, uh, I referred to the Parks and Recreation Committee, uh, the potential to move into the YMCA building, uh, move our recreation center to the old YMCA building, the Richard D. Lindner YMCA building. I was just curious if we have an update on that, uh, about when maybe the first meeting of the Parks and Rec Committee is going to be to kind of keep, start talking about that.
Mr. Kelch?
Yeah, so, uh, we haven't been able to meet since then yet. Uh, we have a, we had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, but, uh, we're going to be pushing that and I'm going to be trying to figure out a date here in new business. So we'll be meeting hopefully.
Thank you, Ms. Kelch. Mr. Fonzell?
Thank you so much. So, uh, I got a chance to meet with the, uh, chief operational officer, uh, last Friday. It was Clint Zimmerman, Tom Perry and I, uh, met with him to just talk about kind of next steps. And, you know, he basically mentioned at the meeting, uh, we were talking about kind of dates of when they're looking and I've just kind of said, you know, it'd be great if we had the decision made by the end of February, like at all parties, YMCA board, city, city administration, city council, everybody kind of on the same page by the end of February about whether we're going to do it or not. Uh, and he kind of replied back, maybe I shouldn't say this publicly, but I will. Uh, he kind of replied back, well, uh, I can have the YMCA board ready to go by lunchtime. So essentially they're ready to go. Like I think, and I honestly think that if we make a good proposal, like if we have a good plan for how we're going to run the building, I think, I really think they're going to give it to us for a dollar or a penny or whatever. There might be some small amount, but I think it's going to be very, very minimal, just knowing that we're going to have to spend some money to upgrade it for ADA. So, uh, I think this is like the, one of the opportunities of the decade kind of for recreation for Norwood. I think there's so much potential to, to use the building. I mean, this building, I'm, I mean, we're blessed that we have such a big room now just during COVID, but it's just not the, I, I don't think it's the right place. Uh, so whatever I can do to assist the Parks and Rec Committee, uh, just let me know, uh, Mr. Kelch, and, uh, I'll be there. So, but I appreciate whenever we can, uh, get going. Well, the immediate action item though is that, and this action item has been given to the mayor as well, but we basically kind of need to know, like what do we want to see in a community center? Like I think we just need to, you know, put those things in a list. I mean, you know, there's a mini list that I kind of created, but, um, you know, I think all of, you know, all of council, at least the Parks and Rec Committee, we need to kind of, uh, do that. And then that'll help just with that comparison of, well, how does, uh, the current community center on Courtland versus the REL YMCA building? How does, how does each compare with kind of those needs? And then what changes would the REL building need to, to meet those needs? And then what changes would the R E L building need to meet those needs? So I think the city administration is probably going to go through that same kind of exercise. I think council can do it, we can compare, but it'll just help with moving forward. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other unfinished business? Thank you. Then we will move on to new business. Any new business? Mr. Dracy?
I'd like to request a committee of the whole meeting for next Monday, the 14th, to discuss the dispatch circumstances, I guess. I'd also like a formal letter inviting the dispatch union, the police union, the fire union, and Lieutenant Rankin himself as well, to present regarding our dispatch capabilities.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Mr. Gaber?
Yeah, I would like to, the mayor mentioned about driving around the city and looking at holiday lights. I'd like to commend our, our public works on the outstanding job that they've done on putting up the holiday lights for the city. Those are new this year and it's a little bit of an upgrade for us and they look really nice. The city hall looks nice. So I just want to commend them. I know that's a lot of work trying to put holiday lights up, anybody that's ever done that, especially trying to probably, there was probably some conversions that had to go on because of the old system and all these new ones that we just purchased and are putting up probably all LEDs and so a lot of changes there. Outstanding job once again and just wanted to commend them.
Thank you, Mr. Gaber. Any other new business? Mr. Kelch?
Yes, thank you. So we're supposed to have a meeting tomorrow, but we're going to push that. And I would like to ask the members of the Parks and Recreation Public Space Committee if they're free on December 13th, or December 17th, I'm sorry, at 7:30.
Is there any chance we can double up with the committee of the whole or do you want to do that?
What day is it?
He suggested the 14th, which was via Monday, it sounds like.
I mean, I'd rather do the 17th or the...
What date did you cite on, Mr. Kelch?
December 17th.
7:30, is that meeting here?
Council chambers.
Any other new business? Mr. Dracy?
I'd request the clerk to send a letter to the fire chief requesting two line items on his report, if possible, his statistics report, and that would be EMS mutual aid and fire mutual aid.
Mr. Dracy, could you, could you send me an email then? I'll forward it to Maria.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Bonzel?
Well, I was just going to ask, clarify, what specifically to Mr. Dracy are you requesting? Are you requesting mutual aid that is requested of us or mutual aid that we requested from other jurisdictions?
Mutual aid requested of us.
Anyone else? Mr. Gaber?
Also wanted to make mention at Pike Street Cafe, formerly known as the Bluebird Cafe. It just recently opened on Monday. I think they're open seven to three daily. It's quite a difference from what was there before. And so again, small business opening up in our city. The old Anis is still under construction. That, that particular group is working and hopefully they'll be open soon as well. And we'll have that, that block, pretty much our central block, looking a lot better and getting some new restaurants in our city, which is good for everyone. And so just encourage everyone, whether it's the Pike Street Cafe or any of other of our businesses, support those, especially during this COVID time. It's been rough on all businesses as well as, you know, families in general, but businesses, especially small businesses have really suffered. So when you get the opportunity, make sure you support, you know, our local restaurants, our local small businesses and show them a little love as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaber. Anyone else? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I wanted to refer to the Economic Development Committee, Factory 52 redevelopment plan. And just would like the Economic Development Committee to look at, you know, just have a chance to hear from Nick about it or their team about it and specifically with regards to traffic and other kind of things that I'd be interested in.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Gaber?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the clerk if they could go ahead and schedule a public hearing for the Joseph VW, a proposal that we need to have a public hearing on. If they could go ahead and schedule that for the second meeting in January, the second council meeting in January, and go ahead and get that posted.
I will do that. Anyone else? So then Monday, the 14th, 7:30 here, committee of the whole.
Mr.?
Mr. Bonzel?
Sorry, before we move on, it was mentioned about our council meeting on the 22nd. I think Mr., or, excuse me, our assistant law director kind of corrected us on that. But are we still planning on having that meeting and are there any circumstances where we would say, you know, hey, let's just, let's cancel that meeting? I just kind of wanted to see if you wanted to entertain a discussion on that.
Certainly. Mr. Gaber, did you have a comment on that?
What my thought is on that is we oftentimes, at least in the past, in my history of being on council, you've been on for several years now as well, a few others, sometimes there are some things that come up that we have to have that not only year, end of the month, but end of the year. I would recommend that we wait till the Friday before that meeting and if we don't have anything really substantial that couldn't be pushed, then we cancel it then. But just in case something would, because I'm afraid we cancel it too early, something comes up, then we got to call a special council meeting and everybody's got to, you know, kind of redirect on plans, especially being close to the holiday season. Just my recommendation.
Yeah, it's Friday, the 18th, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
So I, I think, you know, I agree with Mr. Gaber. We could wait till the 17th or 18th and see if there's any, make our decision. Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, I mean, I have no travel plans. I have no, I don't, I feel free, I mean, I'm happy to meet that day. If we did want to do that, I would guess maybe a question to law department, you know, does Mr. Miracle have the authority right now to cancel that meeting? Or do we need to pass a motion kind of granting him the authority to do that?
Stump him.
That's exactly what this is. Stump the law director on something, which ought to be simple.
We'd always pass the motion.
I think that the council can, it seems to me that the council can probably express their preference as to whether they need a meeting and based on that, then Mr. Miracle can make a call on behalf of the council. Obviously, in the course of expressing that preference, there should be no business of the city discussed other than the question of whether to have a meeting or not. So that there's no violation of the open meetings law.
Mr. Bonzel?
So it sounds like it's a suggestion of the assistant law director that maybe Thursday or early Friday morning that the, something should be sent out and asking us, you know, letting us know what potential items might be on the agenda and asking us yes or no, are you okay with canceling or yes or no, do you want to continue to hold the meeting? And I guess you base your opinion based on that.
Then we can do that on the, on the 17th, Thursday to 17th. Is that fair?
I'd suggest, in, in light of that, possibly some tentative agenda that would be sent out so that, so that the clerk of council secretary isn't making buku copies of stuff, et cetera, et cetera. And based on that agenda, then the council weigh in as to whether to have this last meeting of, you know, 2020.
Gotcha.
That makes sense?
Yeah, so it sounds like then we may want to put the deadline to get things on the agenda to maybe 10:00 AM Thursday. And with that, you could then, we could send out a tentative agenda maybe Thursday afternoon to the council and decide, we can decide whether, yes.
Then if the council decided it needed that meeting, then we could get the documents out in the course of, you know, in the course of by Friday as normal. So that you could review them over the weekend if there was a need for the meeting.
That's the way we'll proceed.
I'll take a plant.
All right. Thank you. Any other new business? And we'll move on, thank you, to communications. Communications, P1, first communication is Mayor Court Finds. Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mr. President. December 2nd, letter dated December 2nd, 2020. Mr. Ken Miracle, President, Members of Norwood City Council, Mayor Court, Mayor's Court Finds. Dear President and Members of Council enclosed, please find the report for Norwood's Mayor's Court for the month of December 2020. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Victor Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. May I have a motion received and filed? Mr. Dracy?
Make a motion to receive and file.
Motion by Mr. Dracy.
Mr. Bonzel?
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Who seconded that, sir?
Uh, Mr. Bonzel.
Discussion?
No discussion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden is a yes.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item P2, Mayor Victor Schneider, appointment, Norwood Arts Board. Mr. Brayden?
Letter dated December 3rd, 2020. RE, appointment, Norwood Arts Board, three-year appointment. Dear Ms. Cook, it is my pleasure to appoint you to a three-year term to the Norwood Arts Board effective January 1st, 2021. Your term will expire on December 31st, 2022. As a member of the first-seeded board, your appointment is for three years, ordinance 60-2020, which establishes, the board states that the first three appointments will be made for one, two, and three years. Appointments after the initial seating will be for three-year terms. Thank you for accepting this position and I look forward to working with you in the future. Sincerely, Victor Schneider.
We're going to have to correct it. We, we can just leave it off, we'll re-read, we'll send it next time. May I have a motion to receive and file?
Make it air.
Mr. Thompson?
Motion to receive and file.
Motion by Mr. Thompson. May I have a second? Mr. Bonzel?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Thompson?
Not that it's a three-year term, but it says from January 2021 to December 2022, which is two years.
We need to, we need to change that to 2023. Can your motion reflect it?
Yeah, motion to adjust the number.
Okay. So we receive and file and adjust it to December 31st, 2023. Good eye, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Bonzel? You mean yours?
Yeah, I'm good.
You're good? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden's a yes.
All members present voting aye, motion passes.
Mr. Thompson will be allowed to go home now.
Yeah. Moving on to item P3, Mayor Victor Schneider, appointment, Norwood Arts Board, two-year.
Letter dated December 3rd, 2020. RE, appointment, Norwood Arts Board, two-year appointment. Dear Ms. Patterson, it is my pleasure to appoint you to a two-year term to the Norwood Arts Board effective January 1st, 2021. Your term will expire on December 31st, 2022. As a member of the first-seeded board, your appointment is for two years, ordinance 60-2020, which establishes, the board states that the first three appointments will be made for one, two, and three years. Appointments after the initial seating will be for three-year terms. Thank you for accepting this position and I look forward to working with you in the future. Sincerely, Victor Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Thompson?
Motion to receive and file.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Bonzel?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Bonzel. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden's a yes.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Is that one next? Did you say VZA?
Yeah, the Ben Island, Ireland one, that one needs to be changed. Is that the next one?
No, that was Sander.
Okay. Sandy's, I think, is right.
Next, item P4, we have appointment to the Norwood Planning Commission. Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mr. President. Letter dated December 3rd, 2020. RE, appointment, Norwood Planning Commission for a six-year appointment. Dear Ms. Kelly, I am pleased to appoint you to the Norwood Planning Commission beginning January 1st, 2021. Your term will expire on December 31st, 2026. Thank you for accepting this position and I look forward to working with you in the future. Sincerely, Victor Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we receive and file this letter.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel. May I have a second? Mr. Thompson? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden's a yes.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. So moving on to P5, it's the appointment of the Norwood Board of Zoning Appeals for Mr. Ellerman. And you will notice in the letter, it says Norwood Planning Commission, so we need to change that to Norwood Board of Zoning Appeals.
Same one or the one I just read, sir?
Uh, no.
Okay, okay. Gotcha.
You can read it, Mr. Brayden.
Ready? Yes, sir. Uh, dated, uh, letter dated December 3rd, 2020. RE, appointment, Board of Zoning Appeals for a five-year appointment. Dear Mr. Ellerman, it is my pleasure to appoint you to the Board of Zoning Appeals beginning January 1st, 2021. Your term will expire on December 31st, 2025. Thank you for accepting this position and I look forward to working with you in the future. Sincerely, Victor Schneider.
Mr. Bonzel? I move to receive and file this, this letter to Mr. Ellerman.
With the, with the correction?
With the correction.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. DiNardo?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. DiNardo. Any discussion? Mr. Gabber?
Is there like a, is there a standard or is it just part of how things were set up or as to why these appointments are so long? Like this is a five-year, there's one prior, it's a six-year, that's longer than elected, any of the elected officials get elected.
Mr. Snyder?
I would defer to the law director, but yes, that's the standard that the Ohio Revised Code states for that position. But Mr. Gary, could you elaborate on that maybe or? And I think the concept is to avoid it appearing to be political and have it be more independent of elected officials and so on and so forth. That is, that it be, that these be independent boards and not be, you know, and, and maintain enough experience on those boards and stagger the expiration of the terms so that you're not, you know, changing the entire board at once generally. I mean, you're starting a board, in this instance, the art board, all at once, but in this case statutes and ordinances are designed to maintain some level of experience, you know, years of experience on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Gary.
Just curious. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, and it's O R C 713.01, Establishment of Planning Commission, it says it in the second paragraph, that there is five members, the mayor, the director of public service, two citizens of the municipal corporation, and one public member who shall serve without compensation. They all should serve without compensation and shall be appointed by the mayor. Point I was making this, oh, it says four term of six years. The point I make of this is that we are bound by that because we are, we don't have a city charter. And if we had a city charter, then that could be in the city charter and that's actually could be amended by the citizens if they wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?[1745.36]
Yes.
Mr. Brayden's a yes.
All members present voting aye. Motion passes. Mr. Dracy?
I'd like the next two letters to, I'd like us to receive and file as read with these next two letters, please.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Mr. Dracy, make a motion to receive and file item P6 and P7 as of read. Mr. Bonzel?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Bonzel. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden's a yes.
All members present voting aye. Motion passes.
Can I, can I ask who, who made that motion, who seconded that?
Mr. Dracy made the motion, Mr. Bonzel seconded.
Thank you. My apologies.
You're good. The last communication, P8, is the Norwood City Planning Commission, Plan Unit Development Plans for Factory 52.
A letter dated December 4th, 2020. On December 2nd, 2020, the Norwood Planning Commission held a public hearing on reviewing the planning cards, partners, final plan, unit development, PUD plan. After listening to the presenter, presentators, and asking if there was anyone else who wished to speak, planning, planning commission is recommending to Norwood City Council that they approve the final PUD plan for Factory 52. Per section 1155.14, the Norwood zoning code, the recommendations of the planning commission are to be forwarded to the Norwood City Council for public hearings and final action. It is requested that a public hearing be set no earlier than 30 days from the receipt of this memorandum.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I would move that we set the date of this public hearing for the second council meeting in January. Look at the exact date. That would be January 26th.
January 26th. So we'll have two, two public hearings that evening? Am I correct?
That's correct.
A motion by Mr. Bonzel?[1707.12]